Before I start off with some stats, I want to introduce the president Sarah Sutter. She's sixteen years old for the party and she works several divisions, but she's then worked up here. So she has a lot of experience up to this division. She actually played a important role from our case building. But as far as stats go, citywide, we're pretty much going down, which is which is good. Times against persons, we're down one point six percent. Times against property, we're down eighteen percent. And again, times against society, it's up, twelve point nine percent. The only reason why that's up is because we're making more arrests. These are these are calls, we're you know, we're signing like disados to the public, we're doing our own surveillance and the other people with us, so that time settles up. But as far as Mayor Mason is concerned, we're doing well. We're down fifteen percent for times against persons.
Nice.
We are down twenty-six percent for times against property, and we're down twenty-two percent in times against society. Yeah, and a lot of that has to do with the community. We're not getting a radio call or a phone call from the community, we are out there, we are still under staff. Citywide, we should be at about three hundred thirty officers, but we're about two hundred sixty officers. So it's hard for us to get out there, but we're doing our best. We rely on you guys to report. I know a lot of the times if we go through the internet to let our neighbors know what's going on, but nine one one or an emergency is the best way to get to us so that we get our units out there and addressing the issue. We did a burglary, commercial burglary series that was here, I'd say a couple weeks ago, two weeks ago. Over, probably over thirty cases, so it's pretty high. Lieutenant Sutter, she did a great job on our block system, her camera system, she was able to ID the suspect, and he was already just outside, but he's there's a lot of hits that he's responding to. So great job by everybody all around. That's pretty much it. Do we have any questions? Yes.
Um, do you know who the stats based on nonviolent call for mental health or homeless people, all of you guys?
Uh, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's going up.
I I heard somebody say the thing was that we need a mental health number like a two one one or a three one one. Did you think that something that would be needed?
Uh, well, it's it's kind of hard because not every every call is comes out as a mental health call. It comes out as a it can come out as a D E, it can come out as anything, but when we get there and we we see what's going on, we'll be realized, okay, this is a mental issue and it's not a criminal call. Uh, it's it's hard for us to, um, yeah, every call different, every call different. I don't know if we can get a specific line, but it does help that we get the right information when the call comes out. A lot of times before calling on emergency, because you go like state or downtown school, and at that time, they're used to it, so it's not an emergency. But when we get there, it's okay, well, this is kind of an emergency, we can get this person help. Um, as far as the homeless, it's we're trying our best with our neighborhood police and these divisions to come out and, you know, move them along here about a hot team that offers several services, but they have to be willing to accept. If they don't accept it, then you know, it kind of is really not much we can do unless there's a criminal access to it.
There is a resource pool, if possible, local, nonviolent, nonviolent. So sometimes if we get there, it's nonviolent, or we can not, we can assess it, um, not hurt, it's different. It's they're not police officers, they're just clinicians, they should go out and they can ask the person voluntarily go to the hospital. If it's nonviolent, if they're violent, or there's any sort of safety risk, then we have to go. Sometimes as supervisors, we can actually like meet the call, it's nonviolent, we can call local crisis response, but it becomes a non-creed response. So they can do that. So that's it, that is a resource that you guys can use.
Um, does San Diego have training for officers in regards to mental health calls? You may not know it in advance, but when we get there, it is. And what is that given? Is it given just as a rookie, or is it followed up with repressure courses?
So we learn, we we get, we get training in the academy before we graduate, but there is a specific curriculum in the academy that a lot of the officers attend. It's honestly, it's a free day class. It's a lot of information, it's a really, really great class of things, and a lot of our officers are using that class.
But that's not mandatory?
It's not mandatory, it's voluntary, but obviously a lot of our officers will do it especially as part of our training officers. So when they have a trainee, you know, they're able to talk about it.
So there's no repressure courses, like every five years or something like that, for all officers, like harassment training? You know, you go through that and it's like?
We do, we, every two years, we go through training.
On on the mental health?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I find memories sort of recur. So you couldn't pass a law to make the amount of shoplifting lesser for prosecutions? Yeah? And and I was gonna ask you if that's impacted things?
Well, we just, uh, there's a change in law, a change in law. So now, if you're convicted of two crimes for shoplifting, now you're, if you were able to go further, possibly, to deal with the arrest.
Have you seen any impact, Mayor Mason, there? Good, good.
And with Target, there's a lot of, they have a lot of, in the shopping centers, they have a lot of, um, they work with C H P, what they they call a blitz, where we, the law enforcement will be in the shopping centers, and the loss preventions will will work together with them and help implement some of that.
Do I think, um, how about that, there's, um, there's a minimum amount for you to steal? Nine hundred dollars, excuse me, a pound?
It's a felony.
If you steal more than, more than seven hours?
Well, it all depends. Uh, it could be a felony, we could give intent that they went to sort of, it's a felony. But normally, it's, it's, uh, the life penalty.
No, once you steal, that's a crime. I would get sent to the local life penalty. That's all I would do.
Let me finish.
Okay, then it's a law. We have potential.
Sam, Sam, I'm asking a question here. Let me finish. So, um, if there is a minimum, then you shoplift less than that. Is it misdemeanor or is it still, it's a misdemeanor? Now, the two strikes is against misdemeanors or felonies?
Uh, most of the time, felonies.
Felonies? So a person can only steal five hundred?
Eventually, it's gonna catch them. Why haven't they, they keep doing?
They are booked and they're
Yes.
recorded as having stolen. So it's a, it's a people in the store, and I'm reporting, and one guy at the store, they, and then, with this one, I remember, and he put down this line. I mean, we, there's not many laws, if you look at rates or whatever.
Some stores have different policies. Some stores, they don't want their employees to adjust any of these things. But if they are, they are making more rate of them, yes.
I have a question about when you see, um, uh, family on the side of the road, you see young children, especially during the school day, during the school hours, is there anything that you can do to, you know, to call that in if these are like school age kids, but not in school, they're on the side of the road, busy road, with their parents and horses?
Are you talking about the community or the law enforcement?
Uh, what, well, what we can do, like as far as, is there anything we can do to call, like if there's someone soliciting for money and they have a little kid with them, who should be at school, like, is there anything that you can do?
Call in for sure.
So what do you call? Because I tried to call, but if
If they're like in the middle of the, of the
Intersection.
Intersection, and they're in a hazard, it's probably nine one one to call. If they're in a parking lot, it's not an emergency. We just need to be able to get our officers out there and keep people, get the kids' names, and see if they are in the local school, close to the, in our area, and then follow them.
Thank you, that's quite a good advice. Okay.
Um, how's that law going? The one that you said is going to be enforced more in March, that's targeting?
Uh, daylight?
Yes.
Daylight is still, it's, it's, it's running, you know, people are, but again, it's something that we're not out there visiting. Checking right now what our park transporters, officers are. We get a radio call, we'll address it that way. Uh, but I mean, you don't think too much of it here, mainly downtown where they're willing to pack their stuff, so.
Well, thank you again. Um, I, yes, one more?
Well, not that, um, people are asking for money that are pretending. Yes. So right now, it's asking for our money. How would you handle?
Don't be up to you guys, don't give them money.
You know, I just had a thought that, um, I'm fairly sure, yeah, the other thing, I might want to, but thank you so much again. Thank you. What? I was just about to swipe it back up to the minutes. The March twenty twenty five notice had been posted on our website. Mayor Mason and council members, any additions or corrections to your notice? Hearing that, minutes are approved. Okay. And our song will make me welcome board member introductions. I am obviously not Mary Ross. Mary, your president is, does taxes for eleven. She is exceedingly busy. We'll see her again today. We plan to see her today. I'm Hannah Stevens, first vice president, program chair. We have Jeff Stevens, secretary of weapons, as your project director. I have Normo, started here in Florida. We have, hers, let's see, Jacob, our membership chair, and second vice president, membership chair. We're also doing our Facebook Live or social media, and Oh, Shane, Shane, we have Shane, okay, oh, there, right there. Uh, we also have, let's see, it's Eric, Eric, hi, Eric, how are you there? This is what I'm going to produce our scholarship against you. Well, welcome to everyone, and a special welcome to our students from Marietta High School, who are back from their spring break. And we have a great group of students that are going to tell us what they did with their Aspen challenge they've been working on. They have the presentation for us. I'm going to sit over here because I know this is a show that I'd like to do.
Hello, everyone.
My name is Sarah.
My name is Kristen, I'm a sophomore.
My name is Natalie, I'm a junior.
My name is Chloe, I'm a senior.
My name is Andrea, I'm a freshman.
My name is Peter, I'm a senior.
So we recently, one of our high school participants in Aspen County, which is a nationally recognized competition, where they task students to implement solutions within their communities. Um, that's the challenge is funded by the Big Brother Foundation, and if you win, we are given the opportunity to go to Aspen, Colorado, to present our solution at the Ideas Festival. Um, so each of their challenge, um, contains education of coastal erosion and rising sea level within San Diego. And they're going to be eight weeks to provide a solution. We hope to affect students effectively, raise awareness of rising sea level within our community. Even though we're an inland, um, community, personally, inadvertently affecting the, or contributing to the issue of the rising sea level. So when we first started this challenge, uh, we thought we'd have a lot of resources, um, that we could use. But we quickly realized that that wasn't, uh, uh, case, so we had to do our own research. So we found out that the two main causes of rising sea levels were pollution and climate change. And doing a lot of, a bit of more, you know, digging in, we found that waste and carbon emissions were the real cause. Um, we also passed some very concerning numbers, but from each year until now, pollution is in about nine inches, and they will continue to have another twelve inches by twenty fifty. During the last year, um, the rate at which seals are, um, rising is accelerating drastically. Um, managed, million people will be affected, and million communities will be indirectly affected. So that's why we have to take immediate action.
All right, so our organization decided to pay active people on hand, try to educate people in Marietta about the issue and involve them in a solution. So some of you might have heard about our estimate, we have been attended or volunteered with it. We hosted a large darks their day event at our high school. So I used my connections from the city council, and we worked at helping get around ten dumpsters, a key waste disposal bin, and two metal recycling bins out to the campus, and we worked with several student clubs and organizations for the staff event. We had around three hundred people show up, and really disposed of their garbage trash and garbage from their house to these dumpsters, and we were able to talk to them about the importance of having a strong awareness of rising seas, and what you can kind of do to combat that within our community. We were able to speak over the people, we got a lot of data from observing, and we were able to rid a hundred and twenty thousand pounds of trash from San Diego watershed. So that's what helped protect our coastline and living ecosystems. By keeping them safe, we're able to reduce coastal erosion as a whole. But that's not all that we did.
Um, another thing we did in our school community was a festival day about basically just getting our students to know about coastal erosion. And doing so, we had interactive activities, which explained what was for our students. We had guest people come out and talk about the subject, because we didn't want to hear more. We also had, um, we reached out to our school representative, just to show that we're going on a higher initiative with what we wanted to do. Um, just to basically track what we did at this event. We not only had a post about all the kids that came this time, we also had basically a little forum, and it talked about just whether it was helpful, if you wanted to do it again, and it basically learned about coastal erosion, and they wanted to get involved and helping. So one of the other things we wanted to do initially, basically going on the way, so it's one, to get useful water bottles and sponsors. Uh, because we're kind of just a student, not maybe reach out to us. But one that did reach back was a brand called Build Forward. And basically with Build Forward, what they did was, they gave us some usable water bottles, which is obviously kind of like ecological things. But they also gave us these water bottles QR codes, and you can check out after with these stickers. If you scan these QR codes, they donate money in their name themselves to just been sharing these involving water safety, one of the ones they had in the water program for schools to get better hygiene, things for water. And basically just giving these out to our students and students. We got not only our students engaged, but we're hoping to get more people engaged. And I definitely come over and just check out Build Forward, because it is a very, it's a very good trip.
Uh, yeah, just to, if it looks a little more of our, you know, your audience, because a lot of people are talking to our high school students, we have social media. Um, our eye is up there, if you guys want to check it out, it's on Instagram.
So something that we discussed with our students at our big high school at school was AI. As some of you may know, AI is a really pertinent issue, uh, right now in not only society, but especially in schooling. Every teacher and every student at our school, um, and we have about two point five thousand students. And if you think about it, that amount of people, we've all touched AI in some way. What a lot of people don't know is that generative AI, like Chat G P T or D C, um, is really streaming on the environment because of the amount of water and the amount of energy that it takes to produce and generate the answers that you get from, um, these neural networks and machines. So yeah, most people don't know is that one Chat G P T query, every time you use Chat G P T, it uses one water bottle worth of water to cool the mechanism. Um, and when you take into account that now more people than ever are using AI, millions of people are using it every single day, and the average Chat G P T conversation lasts about ten to fifty queries, well, that's about ten to fifty water bottles that an average conversation is using. And once you take into account the sheer amount of people and the magnitude of our population that is using it, there's a lot of energy being consumed and a lot of water being consumed that a lot of the time is not used for very useful purposes. Especially with high school students, um, we like to use AI to answer silly questions or generate silly images, that sort of thing. And what we really tried to do, uh, at our festival was educate our students on the management of our AI usage, using it in wise ways. Um, because it's really such a current issue right now.
So as, um, as I were briefly talking about a survey, uh, we surveyed, um, we surveyed adults and students from our dumpster day and festival respectively. So as you can see, around sixty percent of adults, uh, are not particularly knowledgeable about the effects of coastal erosion. And for students, that would go up to around eighty percent. And then from the eighty-five percent of people who have participated in both of our, um, both, uh, dumpster day and the festival, we figured out that, uh, maybe eighty-two percent were more knowledgeable of coastal erosion after, after they did the event. And a walk base, ninety-five percent of them were more likely to, uh, attend an event, maybe spread more awareness. And this just goes to show that like, even, even though people aren't knowledgeable, if they had the proper knowledge, they would be all, they're all even out there like, helping, spreading more, and maybe do more community.
Um, so for a resident, a live at a school member, so you can involve them, which is actually right in fact, they're, thank you.
He asked her extensively with the San Diego City Council, it's in conference and cafe, and his office is, he was a great help to me to do the darks their day event, and then he gives a plug outside. Do you work in groups on campus and call them?
Um, we also work with our own school A S C, and we work with the San Diego Regional Climate Collaborative at U N S D.
We have worked with sponsors around Robinex, Tractor Bus, and of course, with the Silver.
Um, we also worked with our community champion, which is an individual with the Aspen Challenge, who's designated to help us with our members, who's younger, Elrato. And she presented, um, a really good idea that will help us with our sustainability and our future plans.
She is working with the San Diego
Which is working with the San Diego authority. Um, she has a connection with the San Diego authority, and one of our future plans is to create curriculum for school age children, especially young children, um, in elementary and middle school, to really raise awareness of this issue, and really instill a sense of, um, environmental action and feelings of responsibility from a young age that will persist a long way into their futures.
Uh, the next sustainability, continuing to collaborate with clubs on campus, like Environment Club, E S B, and National Parks Society, as well as continuing dumpster days with county and the city council, whether that be annually or four times in a year. I'm sure all of you guys would love to hear that, but for me.
We also decided to create a website with a free communication page, where you can visit, an event page, tell them what's going on, and a contact page, if you guys want to contact us directly. We created this website because it's sustainable, it helps with sustainability, and it, it's, it's a living, like, social media, it's constantly added, or
Thank you.
So we have time again, we have time for a little question and answer. Uh, I also am delighted to introduce the teacher coach for this wonderful group of students. We have Mr. Paul Morgan here.
And I just wanted to add that his group is going to be competing against other high schools from all over the city, um, coming out next week, right? And, um, last year, they were the top three high schools in our entire district that won, and they got to go to Aspen, so we're hoping for a
Different team.
Different team, different team, different team, but school, Mayor Mason, so we're hoping for a, now it's creepy, but creepy.
Because I have, I have a question for this student, what's up with AI thinking?
Oh, yeah, so, um, oh, yeah, absolutely. So AI refers to artificial intelligence.
Artificial intelligence.
Yes. Um, so you might notice when you use, uh, like social media, like Facebook, or even like search engines, like Google or Bing search engines, they have, um, like little AI features that a lot of people use to research. So that's one aspect of artificial intelligence. What a lot of people are using now is something called generative AI, and that's, um, AI machines that generate, uh, that generate one image, but then they also generate, uh, queries, like search queries. So for example, you could say to Chat G P T, create me a study guide for US history. Um, and the whole thing, it would search the entire internet, and it would search all the information on the internet and compile, um, a whole study guide for you based on, uh, the parameters that you give this artificial intelligence. What a lot of, the major issue with artificial intelligence now, what people are critiquing about it, is so many individuals, and especially school age children like us, we're using it to literally do our homework and, um, literally replace all our work, and it's kind of erasing the aspect of school that's meant to teach us critical thinking and individual thought. So that's why it's such a personal issue right now, because, uh, so many children are experiencing literally lack of critical thinking and degradation of these, uh, of our literal intelligence, because we're looking to something else to give us all the answers. And it's so powerful right now, and it's a true, and it needs to grow, and that is due, over time, as it's being funded and as the brand is being generated for it, which is why it's such a current issue, and what a lot of people are not talking about is the environmental effects that it has.
So how many here use Facebook? Yeah, so if you, you just, you'd like to do a quick scroll, like, after you can, like, easily just find something that looks so fake, that it was not even human, you know? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, that's made by AI, like, each time we filter one of those posts, it, that's having a harmful effect on the environment. But there's also so many of those posts. So that's one of the main problems with AI, it's kind of like becoming like embedded in our society now. There's also sometimes you like spread misinformation and all of those other things.
I think I can help you guys, if I can get it, for what you're right. AI right now is at the point, remember when we watched it that time? Like, remember how revolutionary that was, and how little it actually did? When AIs right now are in, have their watches, we haven't even got to computers, to cell phones, to smartphones. The one terrifying part of people is this is the end of the movie, the stage, and they're just gonna go from here. It's a very scary problem.
Figure out if you're using AI, how are they, are they, are there tools that you use so that you know, hey, this is AI, this is not a person?
Now, so there are professionals who slap a lot of teachers, like I have teachers who design, who, when we send an essay for assignments, um, they will take our assignment and they'll run it through an AI detector. And when AI generates, um, a lot of language and speech for you, there's patterns in the way that it generates this information. You can tell something is AIified, this physical style that gets written in. Um, so when, oh, when teachers put our work into these AI detectors, they can usually detect these patterns, because machines don't have, right? So, um, these detectors are, and there's, there's kind of issues and debates on how, um, on the efficacy of these AI detectors, and whether, because a lot of time people turn to, are their original work, but the AI detects it as AI. Exactly. So there's a major issue with the programs of these AI, that the AI detector is hard, right now.
I just want to...
Um, so I don't know what to say as well. A lot of teachers, you can do like on-demand writing assignments in class, on-demand assignments, to kind of gauge where you are. It's like, if you use AI on like online, and if you need to distinguish whether your work is authentic or not?
Can we use that when you write a test?
Uh, it's a...
Yes. If a teacher doesn't set up a test correctly, they can use it while they're taking the test on their laptop. Or if the teacher is properly closing the browser, students can use AI while they're taking tests if the teacher's paying attention.
What if they say back in our age, you're cheating yourself, right?
Well, that's how I teach AP US history, and I always tell them, like, if you use ChatGPT, you're gonna fail the test. And you're gonna have to explain to your parents why you got A in my class, and you got a one on the test. Like, you're gonna have to explain that to someone somewhere while you know nothing, and you're bringing this question.
Great job, guys.
Our next time, our agenda is, I'm going to all of the groups that were here doing the, yes, walk around, uh, community expo. If yes, anybody who wants to speak, it's free to three or four minutes, so, yeah. I know that the Women's Club was interested, so if you guys want to lead off.
Good evening. I'm Susan Johnson, here at the Women's Club, and we are small, all on turn on topic. That's the relation to the difference since nineteen seventy-four, probably long before we were born. We focus on four different areas. We focus on education, women's health, families and youth, and veterans. And so, members choose whatever kind of projects they want to work on. We also do social activities, and we're much more than just members, we're a family. Some of the things that we do for education, for example, we adopted Lock Ground Elementary School a few years ago. And we've done, we made a lot of money for seventy-four. We have seventy-six percent of children as local residents. So a lot of those children, even their home was put at home. We've done school supplies, backpacks. One year, I asked, I asked the teacher, the principal, she started, it was a really unrealistic one. And she had like a building where she was, stuff that she really needed on it, but couldn't get into the budget. So we've gotten, uh, who knows, playground equipment, and one of the things that they were really trying to do, that was at home. We've also done scholarships, and for, uh, women's health, we do, uh, breast cancer, it is every year at the K hospital. And our oldest project is called Comfort Pillow. It's about a twenty-year-old project. Every year, someone would, so, uh, make this very nice, little small pillow that women use who are undergoing breast cancer treatment, or are, have other, um, things that they're recovering from. And they provide a lot of comfort, both physically and mentally. For veterans, every year, we raise money for Free to Cross America, and that's, is, uh... Sorry, I don't know what I'm saying. That is done every December at all of the national cemeteries in the United States. And we have groups that go in Lake Rees, um, grave sites in Neymar National Cemetery. It's a very special project. And I'm going to turn this over to Dora. Dora and I are co-chairing a very special project that we're dealing with veterans. And she's going to tell you all about it. Hi, I'm Dora Barbara. And one of the projects that we are involved with this year is to, um, raise funds to, for the Shelter to Soldier Project. And they're a non-profit organization, and what they do is they, they train, they go to one of the, um, shelters, they find dogs that would be good for being, being trained as a psychiatric dog. And then that psychiatric dog then is cared for by a vet who either has PTSD, or traumatic brain injury, or has been a victim of sexual abuse. So the training is, is pretty intense, and it involves, you know, several levels of training. And the cost for one dog to be cared for the soldier is eighteen thousand dollars. So that is our goal right now, is to buy one dog for one veteran. So we already started, um, you know, the campaign, as you say, and we are, you know, looking for, um, sw- you know, corporate donations, and, you know, from small businesses or all businesses, corporate businesses as well. So we are looking for donations, monetary donations, or we're also looking for in-kind donations, such as like gift cards. Now, I'll talk a little bit about the gift card. So, um, so, uh, we're looking at that right now. And so if any of you, any of you have a part of a local business, we would love to hear from you, you can contact us. The information is there on the table. Um, and, uh, but our, um, big event is, we are actually going to have a huge event on November fifteenth, it's a flyer here, and it's going to be at the Senior Center. And what we're going to do there is, we're going to have a fun base, and we're going to have Christmas trees. We're going to have artificial Christmas trees, three feet, artifici. And we're gonna, uh, you know, we're going to ask, uh, businesses and corporates, you know, companies to, uh, you know, to sponsor a tree. And, and also the, uh, pick a theme of decorations, we're gonna have, you know, pick a theme of, uh, decorations, and we'll decorate each of the trees. And so we're gonna have about fifteen trees that day, and then we're also gonna have, uh, gift baskets, you know, like Christmas related gift baskets. And that's where the gift cards come in. We'll, we also look at what gift cards that we'll use to, you know, act to the gift baskets. So, um, once we have that, once we have the trees set up at the Senior Center, then we're gonna invite the public. We're inviting all of the Ariza community to come and join us and help us raise funds for this, you know, for this, you know, this project that we're doing. And, uh, so, and we will be putting up flyers, and you'll see it on Facebook as well, on, on the social media, that comes through. And so we hope that you can join us that day, and, you know, and it'll be a lot of fun. It's gonna be a lot of fun, and, uh, I think that's it. If you'd like to keep up with any of our events, if I know what we're doing, um, I give a newsletter, my resident newsletter, and I love flyers, and that is actually, if you, if you'd like to go, I can newsletter. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Oh yeah, if you want me to do a quick...
I was thinking maybe you could give a quick before you have, uh, a school coordinator here, and leave a little early.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, great to be here. I'm your school board trustee for District A, who lives in Mira Mesa, which is where I'm from, from Ito, so, my favorite area, um, but also Scripture Ranch, and Kearney, and Claremont areas. Um, right now is a really fun time of year for us, because of all the interior activities that are going on. Um, you know, we have our teachers here, we have our classified year celebrations, so a lot of like just those things, concerts, all the art fairs. Um, if you ever just want to put a smile on your face, you know, go to a school, and, you know, you can elementary school in the area, and go, you know, go to the, you know, open house, or, you know, end year program, and it's just, it's just a way to lighten your experience. Um, so I would say, some of it, I was actually in Washington DC about two weeks ago, um, and for legislative, legislative of a, or a lot of our urban schools are from all over the country over there. So I have to say, it was kind of a heavy time break out for public school, and, uh, but it was nice to be with other leaders from all over the country, and a lot of quick, you know, but, um, a lot of, um, you know, coming together kind of collective spirit. Uh, we were able to go to Congressman Peter, uh, Congressman Sarah Jacobs, Juan Vargas, and Schiff's office. Now, they weren't there, but we spoke with their staff, um, about what, you know, what was most important to us. And, uh, I'm sorry. That's all right. Last thing, I always really wanted to share with you, you might have seen this on the news, it's kind of exciting. With that affordable housing crisis that we have, not only here in San Diego, but across the country, um, we are consolidating some of our properties, uh, because we have had some declining enrollment. Not terrible, but we're, um, you know, a little bit of school enrollment going down. We have a lot of properties around the state. So what we're doing is consolidating some of where our, our district buildings are gonna be, and we're gonna have these open plots of land. So we're actually gonna be building for staff on these properties, and we're going to prioritize our, um, classified employees and teachers that are, you know, maybe newer to the district, um, you know, everyone, of course, needs help with housing, but especially some of our, you know, newer teachers, you know, like our bus drivers, our custodians. So trying to help all of them out, and, um, we, you know, there's, I think there's like five different parcels around the city. And we're also gonna be working with the Community College District, uh, something called a Housing Authority that we're starting. So it's gonna actually be a committee that they're starting, and they have two representatives from our school board, our president, vice president currently, as well as two representatives from the Community College District, and there'll be other people on there. We're looking at like faith-based organizations, working with the city, all different places. Um, and we're gonna be trying to work with those organizations to provide housing in other areas, not just school land, but the community colleges have land as well, UCSD, San Jose State, so I'm excited about that, you know. It's not, and hopefully, other, you know, organizations will follow suit, and do some kind of similar, we're trying to be creative. Um, a lot of people are looking to San Diego, like, see how this goes for us, um, but excited about that work. Um, I think, probably, don't hold me on this, but I'd say like, probably about two years, I would say for the first, it's gonna be down, more downtown San Diego, um, I don't know, uh, but any, there's gonna be some in Old Town, um, in other areas, University Heights, that they're gonna be building. Uh, I don't remember exactly all the different areas, but, um, I'm sure there's information on the website, if there's not, the contact, I can get more, to be more information.
And how many houses are you looking at? Only for teachers?
It's for teachers and classified staff. Um, so that's like your front office staff, you know, your bus drivers, people like that. So even though teachers make more than that, those staff, you know, they still need housing as well. So some of it will be, a percentage will be for teacher, and a percentage will also be for classified staff as well. And they're hoping that they're gonna be able to impact about ten percent of our, of our staff overall, you know, which isn't a lot. But hopefully, there'll be other programs that come on board to, um, complement what we're doing, so.
I, I talked to a lady from the Three Oaks, and I asked her, it was a summer exam, and she said they do have a lot of the housing we have.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't think, yeah, I don't know, I mean, because, yeah, this is specifically our school properties that we're gonna be mailing out. So a lot of places do have affordable housing, but not, but not very much, you know, a very small percentage. But the state is trying to provide extra incentives, so for example, we're gonna be working with developers. Because there's low interest loans and other opportunities, they, the, um, the, uh, the developers will still make money.
You know, law colleges and little schools.
Yeah, there's all kinds, you know, Mesa College, we work with, uh, City College downtown, and so.
Oh, another question.
What about the DOE closing and all the impacts there? How does that impact our local schools?
So, that's a good question, and there's a lot of lawsuits going on all around that. We've talked about that a lot in Washington with a group we're part of that's called the Council of Great City Schools. Like I said, they represent a lot of rural groups. Uh, there's a lot being done on our behalf, um, you know, at, in Washington, and at the state level. Um, I will say, we're lucky that we live in California, because there's, there's been a little bit more protection around public education than I would say in some of the other states. Um, it remains to be seen, but right now, you know, we're doing everything we can to support our students. That's what we're gonna do every day, um, you know, we, it, you know, it, there's a lot of chaos going on, and what we're trying to do is try to, try to stay focused, because there's a lot more questions than there are answers right now. So, um, probably more about that coming forward, but, um, you know, right now, we're just focusing. And the problem is, by getting rid of some of those programs, I won't go into a lot, I can tell, but our federal funding for our schools, uh, most of it provides funding for our Title I students, those are students under the poverty level, our, um, students that are on Medicare. We have forty thousand students that are on Medicaid, sorry, not Medicare, um, and, you know, are medically fragile students. So there's a lot of students that, special education, so when you say, I'm gonna, we're gonna get rid of the poverty of education, and it sounds like, oh, that's great, we're gonna save all this money, but it's impacting some of our most vulnerable students, and those are students that are in poverty and crisis. So that's who we're trying to protect right now, um, because those are students that can take a voucher in private school, and a lot of times, they, they won't choose, they, they won't select, uh, uh, take special education students, or, you know, uh, they can be very selective at private school. So anyways, we're trying to do everything we can to protect all of our students, um, and to provide quality education for all our students that, that come to our schools.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Tom Nerv, uh, also known as the St. Guy. Uh, so if you have any questions, you can call me, thank you. Um, but I am the chairperson for the Making Systems History. This started back in nineteen eighty-two, uh, when it was implemented, and we started out taxing, uh, your bottom line on your tax bill about seven dollars, so much cents, and now, to this day, we're at seventeen dollars and sixty-eight cents, which is really not very much, considering what we're trying to do. And what we are trying to do, we ran out of money, so we have to do another ballot. And the ballot is to whiten our critical thinking of what we can do as far as contracts and working with cement, and, uh, doing the medians and things like this. Um, they all take, kind, they take money, we can't afford all in one shot, so what we have to do is increase to a certain point, and then allow that money to create, um, uh, prosper in the bank for a while, uh, until we get to the funds that are necessary to complete the particular project that we're going at. Uh, one of my projects is one, I want to put medians down, uh, community overheads down to, uh, Cap Crystal. And if you know, there's, uh, there's cemented medians and there's, uh, paved medians, and I want to get rid of those and put in, um, planters that will have what we like, we have down on the area, so, considering that, because it looks hacky, like a stated asphalt medium. But that's what I'm after. But there's many other things that people, I had one person here today was, uh, commenting that we should put markers on all the medians so people don't run into, uh, reflect it. Okay, but we're well-lit. I have no problem with that. That should not be too expensive, um, I think, but it's something we have to get into. But this is what we're trying to do. So we are in the process of getting ready to do a ballot. We're coming up with the ideas that the projects are gonna cost, then we'll let... We're coming up with the ideas that the projects are going to cost. Then we'll let the city come in and figure out, okay, how can we best paint it? And that is going to be an interesting situation. Okay. So, but there are many other things that people they want that I don't know about. And the only way I find out is if people come and join our group. We have a yellow sheet there that we love to have your names on there, email addresses. So we meet the first Tuesday of every month from 5:00 until 6, 7 at the latest. And we meet at the Lopez Bridge rec center. So if you're game and you're willing to put up with a bunch of little fogies, we would love to get some of the younger fogies in. So that's it.
I like that phrase, younger fogies.
I turned it out to be a little foggy.
Yes, I think that in the office.
I meant, I meant what this is. 2004.
Okay. Well, I know that Lynn Nguyen from the SDSU BBC lab would like to say a few things to us.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lynn Nguyen. I am an outreach volunteer in San Diego as a bilingual development and contact lab at SDSU directed by Dr. Liam Khan. She is a Spanish language and speaking professor at SDSU. And this lab is directed by Dr. Liam Khan. She is very interested in learning about diversity, language development in bilingual children, especially children who are learning Spanish or Spanish as their first language. And I always do understand, try to understand how, how children learn the languages and how to support their bilingualism with and without language. And so we have, currently we have two, we need to support children for, for, to play in our language study. One is for the language assessment tool so that we can create the assessment tool for the language language. And the other one is for Spanish and also for bilingual speaker for children from 5 to 7 to participate in this language study. So I have a few flyers that I developed out there. One is, this one is for the language assessment tool in case you know bilingual students who are the age of four to eight, which can go to this program. The technical thing that's taken at SDSU, the university center. And the other one is for Spanish and as well as bilingual speaker, play 5 to 7, who can play this study. And another one is we tried, we created a program, outreach program for young children. And this program we created by your story time at the library here at Mesa. Once again, our goal is to get to know and make the difference in this field as well as the language learning and, you know, the mobile language. And, um, did you have a key to language and the mobile language? Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'd like to say a few words about the, during the second one. Just, if you have a chance to visit the diary that you're in, you're walking around here at the end of the meeting, you might love your, if you can. Oh, just short T-shirts. Mira, please. Let's see, well, we have a lot of the other groups, well, you know, actually, maybe just next to the Church of Salvation. May you want to speak about that?
Um, welcome. Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing today? Good. Got some cookies in there? All right. Well, my name is Shane O'Narrow. I am with the Church of Salvation. As some of you know that we are a church, as it says in the name, so we have services to go send it. There's another great part. We've also helped homeless people get on the streets. We've helped over 100 homeless people since the last two years. We've, in the end of the summer last year, we helped 125 people, pointed them to shelters, stable housing and such. I think we're at 16 or 17 this year. And we are consistently working to do that. So that's kind of my main full time. I also, I mean, there's just so many different, like, you know, homelessness is a huge issue and we need to find a way to deal with it with compassion and love. And that's what we do at the church. We make sure that people that we talk to feel like they can see and they feel like, hey, you know what, there is still hope. So that's a lot of work to do. If you get a chance, you can check out our flyer. That's on the table here. Also, I don't know if anybody knows, but last year, we did something called the State of Homelessness, which was, we got, can't believe it all. It's the first time this has ever happened in San Diego. It was bizarre. I don't know, everybody can tell me. But we got the county supervisor, the city council member and the town council president, all on one table to talk about homelessness. And so we did that last year. And so that is what it's all about. Any questions?
Not yet.
Yeah, go ahead. In the back, go ahead.
So I'm, I'm still in high school and I wanted to ask you, what was kind of the age rating people in homelessness or near homelessness? Because I know there's a lot of elderly homeless people. Well, I've also been hearing a lot of an increase in youth people experiencing homelessness.
So there is an increasing amount of youth homeless, which is really interesting where students like yourself are, within a lot of, it's kind of that couch surfing, they're not sleeping on, on the streets. So a lot of times when you hear those numbers like Supreme and laws will talk about, those families are sleeping with somebody else. They're now on the lease. And that's, but technically, the truth is, that is not what HUD defines as homeless. Oops, sorry. Homeless is literally sleeping on the streets for a lot of three days at least. That is defined as homeless in San Diego. So couch surfing is not considered homeless, but don't trouble, buddy. I still consider that homeless, right? And we help those people too. But yes, there's youth and it's seen, as soon as it started to become increasingly popular, because what happens is you started off with two incomes and then one person passes. Is that my son? Uh, one person passes and now a two, a two income household has now become one person. And what you were able to do to take care of the bills is not possible anymore. With youth, a lot of it is you get students that don't, the LGBTQ community is big on the youth homeless because students are getting kicked out of their homes because of that. And that is happening. Also, you get foster youth. Foster kids that grew up in the welfare, they were foster kids and that is another issue. But the population that we generally deal with is in general, so it's not T, which is 25 or younger. And it's really not seniors, which is, I don't know, the age for seniors is not getting lower and lower every year. I feel like it's getting closer and closer. I think someone told me, your felony is like 50 now. I'm like, really? A senior? All right. So it's more in general population. We do deal with some seniors and when we get a chance, we do deal with some youth. I'm actually connected with youth programs that deal with homelessness and such. Any other questions? Yeah. All right, we got a question. Go ahead, Lauren, I'm sorry.
Um, I guess going to the front here, and then get the house or in the house, do they get back on the streets or do they stay?
So a lot of these people that we deal with, the ones that we deal with particularly, are really first year homeless. So they, they have a need to get back into what they, they lost. But there are some that are longer than the first year and then we call those chronic. And what happens is after the first year on the streets, you start becoming, you start going into survival mode. Does that make sense? So if anybody's ever had their lights cut off or no food in the house, anything like that, you go into the survival mode and that's what we see on the streets. And then you have to figure out how to get that back. If you can't get that back, so the longer you stay out there, guess what? You go with drugs, you go into, and if you already have mental health issues, you don't have the calendar appointment mindset to go get the medications that you're taking, right? So because you're on the streets. So you end up using drugs. So most people, so people that have mental issues, some of them also taking drugs to cover their mental issues. Any other questions? Yes?
Um, you know, I always like to hear when things have, well, like some of your, what, 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 uh, what is success? When we get, when we do, when you're successful in people and doing something.
You want to give official answer or you want to? So what goes into success?
Yes.
Um, I, I'm gonna tell it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say honestly, Jesus. That's, that's the successful part. I, I, I'm good, but I'm not that good. I'm handsome, I'm not that handsome. All right. The truth is, is what people get out of me is what they, a lot of times they need to hear. And it's not coming from me, it's coming from the Holy Spirit. And so that, to me, that has always been my success, to lead with love. What does that mean to lead with Jesus? I can't go out and tell people, hey, I lead with Jesus. But so my official answer is for the board, I lead with love. That's the secret to success.
Well, I think I, I found this way, and you came up and handed this to yourself to move up your tongue.
How you doing? I sit down and listen to you. I want to know how you're doing and what, how did you get in this situation? How, how are you dealing with this? Is there anything that you want to do to get off these streets? Are, are you, are you okay? Do you feel sick? Oh, you don't want to go into a shelter? Oh, you feel bad? Is there something else we can provide you with? Oh, if not, it's okay. It's all right. We'll just take our time and get to know each other.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, you said they don't count couch surfing as homelessness. What about people living in cars?
Um, that's a tricky one. Because I don't think they count that as well. I think it's on the streets, but cars is, is really, believe in that. I think if you're sleeping in your car, it'll probably get you into a place quicker because I know a couple people in safe parking lots. Those are really important pieces of the homeless community because even though you don't have, it's the one safety, I don't know where it's starting off. And so a homeless person told me, if you have a car, it's almost like having a mansion.
Yep.
Because you have shelter, you have protection. You might not have a bed and a couch and all that, but you have some sort of safety that you could be in. And so by having a car, it is really like the pinnacle place to be in. You have met mothers with children living in their cars. I've met families living in their cars. Actually, the very, I moved here in December, December 5th, 2017. One of the things I saw in the newspaper, thank God for election, I'll tell you why, was a family that, you know, December in San Diego is really cold. And this family was backed up against the wall, had to keep running on in their car. And they all died from COVID a lot of time. That was in the paper. And I came from an area where we never experienced anything like that. I was traumatized. To find out that a few years later, I'd be working in the industry. And a few, and a few years after that, I, I was running my own outreach program. And as of this November, I've been in the industry for five years. So that, that's what, that's, so I don't know, do they consider it? I think, I'm not sure if they do. I didn't know couch surfing, but truthfully, I'm not quite sure, but I pulled it up if you want. But, you know, again, if you find somebody that's homeless and they're sleeping in their car, let me know because then we can actually point them to something. I have people in both safe parking lots, Jewish Family Services, and youth change. That I can say, hey, you know what, do you have space over there? You know, and it's just, I made a lot of good connections to do the work that I do. Any other questions? Did I satisfy all the questions?
Yes.
All right, good. You like that?
All right. Well, let's see. We are now at a stage where we have a, we have a safe way to enter the, the gender, we have, we have a, and we have students and fireworks capable of, that we can, luckily important for them. Mary Missel Library is at the library? Yes, it is. It's after 8:00 now. After 8:00 hours. I spoke with Coach Larda and the youth library. Hazel set up this meeting. They were very helpful to us. I will mention there are some good library events coming up. Hazel, Riley, that will flip the thing there if you want to look at, see what's happening. Or just go to the library website, calendar page. We have the link in the newsletter and on our community calendar page. And there are a lot of things. There are two bookrooms that meet at the library. One of the second Tuesday of the month, the Video Maniacs, and one of the last Tuesday of the month, the Band Book Club. You can find out more information about both of those. Jerome Mark College, Wes Lindbergh emailed me today and my email was acting up. It was probably to let me know we couldn't make it tonight. I didn't know at the time it was, and it was coming, they didn't make it. And nine of those persons.
They have a, they have a band this week. Oh, there is, from 11 to 12.
Ooh, okay.
I'll have some of my critics there.
Oh, wonderful. This coming Wednesday, April 10th, Wednesday, 11 to 12. Uh, to the, what, the inquiry or where?
Um.
For the, for Mark. Yeah, yeah, email me. That, that sounds.
Okay, I'll shoot you down.
Right, sounds good. So Strips Space and Fireworks, Michael Spencer can't be here tonight, but we have the P in here. And Jennifer, do you have those services? They're all on display. Linda, hold those up. Those are lovely. They're available for donations. Strips Space of Fireworks is at the raffle and it's something we're doing next for surprise that you can get there. Okay. So let's see, anything else that you'd like to say? There will be a fundraising team meeting toward the end of this month. Michael said it may well be Wednesday, the 30th, which is the last Wednesday. But he's going to double check on, on the, when the, when the fifth, when the last Wednesday is, if this fifth Wednesday there's a question, will it be the fourth or the fifth? But so schedule with the, well, then this is, this is a better way to schedule that. Let's see now. Mary Missel here anyway, yeah.
All right, maybe I'll, I'll stay here for a second. A couple of things. One is that our last community event, our semi-anglo elections, every two years, half the board is elected by the community. And so to that, there were five new residential members selected on a date. It also, though, given. David Billso, Bill Givens, Eric Zore, Kevin Yu, and myself. Uh, and then Philip Plinson was elected as business member, who did not belong to Part B. But there's still vacancies for one proper miller member and two business members. So, if anyone knows, some of you could fill that, um, those places that people haven't got. Um, a couple of the planning group, I have over there on the side, the Nermis Community Plan, as well as the, uh, the master plans for both three routes of Stone Creek, which are two very large projects in this community. Here, of course, it's getting close to being done. Stone Creek is, is about twice as big as three routes, and it will start in a few years. So, all the details are, are over there. So, the nice thing about planning group is you see all these things years in advance, you aren't surprised by any of them, and you have, and have some, some input to the city. So, the planning group specifically is a place to gather input about land. Uh, meetings are the third Monday of each month. The last meeting, um, we did have one major project, called Strunberg's Laboratory. Um, it's a large biotech project. It's, um, proposed to be built basically as a sort of big, big hole of power lines running up it between the Strunberg and, and Mrs. Strunberg Parkway, over the north side of Nermis Boulevard. Um, it's a little hard to see how they do that, but they had pictures that showed it. Um, I could approve that, although it's, it's only, it's pretty early stages, so I expect we'll be seeing that. Any questions for me? Okay.
And now, we have City Councilmember Kent Lee and Mr. Rondo, come on up.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alexis, I'm from County Parkville, so I'm just gonna give a quick update, but I have an overnight report, probably more questions, um, if you can look at the minutes or ask me directly. So, for those that live on Parkville, the Everloca, that will make the special notice to be with Powell and the non-registered, and that's a statement of, we're meeting in the part of the beginning of April.
So, actually, that's the North End Notice on Parkville, the South End Notice on Parkville says April twenty-first to May fifth. So, they may be planning to, to.
What's I first?
Right, and I know that because I went to my house to Michael Spencer's house today. So, that's the, right.
You know, our, yours and I's, so I appreciate you doing this. Uh, so that work in total will take approximately six to eight weeks. So, like, maybe once I first, the other night, after, we'll, 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 and then for Gold Coast Drive, all the utilities is still working on, lowering the water mains to prepare for storm drain work. Storm drainage installation will follow, and it'll be able to get after it eventually. In the meantime, the contractor, uh, in the meantime, the contractor was in the area today. They were addressing interior obstacles on both Gold Coast Drive and Parkville Avenue.
They were, they were filling some open ends today, so that's.
Oh, that's awesome, yeah, we, we got a couple of reports last week, so I'm glad we took a picture of it during the meeting, so maybe it works good. Thank you. And then the community parks, they are all ongoing. The March Report is up for the Nermis Community Park, um, project website. They are working on basketball courts, the rest center, art facility, and a lot more. There were, um, delays when the rain, not delays, but the rain and other was, at construction delivery was happening. But the city did complete stormwater inspections to make sure that the carpet was being empty accordingly, and everything was fine, and they're back in construction. And so, we still expect it to reach potential location by September twenty-first, right? Some resources and alerts, there's a new CIP project keyword launched by the Capitol Improvement Program. If you're ever interested in going to the details about the projects that I'm mentioning, there is now a search app and track feature where you can see all the infrastructure projects in the community. And, most importantly, uh, something that I found interesting was the street overlay, um, tracker, so you can see at any time which streets the city is working on. And, and about that, we'd like for you all to join us in. Next week, we will be having, the seniors of Diego's first better proclamation ceremony, honoring the fall's iconic operations we could win in Black April, November. This will be at ten AM, so if you're at work, that's totally understand. But if you wanna show up and celebrate, uh, speak up, or honor, um, that.
What is that for?
Quarter of all the college, twelve seconds. So, it's almost fifty, fifty years.
Yep, that's twenty.
You can also always connect online, using YouTube. And a couple reminders, the, the Mesher Bee's Open House for District Six will be tomorrow on April eighth, on University, North University Committee, by review. Um, help with the address on my notes. And the mayor's draft budget will be out on April fifteenth, with the review process after that. And for you all tonight, they overlapped with the next townhouse meeting, but on Monday, May fifth, is the first session for the public input meetings, and it starts at six.
I was wondering if you could follow me on that, what time?
They start at six AM.
At six?
Yes.
Six, and that, is that downtown, or?
Yes, in the city chambers.
Okay, so, it's not out, you would be somewhere like it sometimes does at eight.
So, there's two different, this is a part of the budget meeting, we do officially with all the councilmembers. Uh, we will be hosting our, our district minutes with our councilmembers as I gave, uh, for the budget town hall, that'll be in the community.
Uh, that meeting that's, the, uh, budget one, the fifteenth, is there a virtual comp on it too?
Yes, you can give, um, virtual, call it comp.
You know, there's, uh, how would I?
We'll have it on April fifteenth.
April fifteenth.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you run that up on the question here? Because what you call, we don't know about that. Uh, let's see, you, you, well, hello, we have, I don't know that we have, uh, Lucero from the Landen from the mayor's office, or anybody from the mayor's office to know. Uh, then we have county supervisor, Tara Los, what do you hear, oh, Mark, right here.
Hi, uh, good evening, or good night, everyone. Uh, one thing I want to bring from our office is, uh, regarding a proposal that's getting, uh, brought up, uh, by the Marvel for Super A meeting. Uh, giving some, uh, background on this, uh, issue is regarding, uh, private equity firms that have, have ordered the national fire threat market. So, um, in a sense, it's kind of like trading of prices and artificially, uh, building the equipment from kind of like nine hundred days, trading the product. From twenty nineteen, the, um, prices have actually gone from like one point three million to two point three million. So, um, it's about bringing a proposal to see what the town can do when it comes to, uh, financial reconciliation, new strategies, and policy reforms to fight back against this monoplastic grid of, uh, venture capital holding this specific, uh, area. Uh, engine cost of loss of doubles from six hundred and fifty thousand to one point three million, and, uh, uh, higher by the first month, uh, putting a proposal that, uh, we hope to see, uh, fans at tomorrow's for Super A meeting. Uh, when it comes to the board meetings, um, they are at sixteen hundred Pacific High Bank, uh, for one superintendent person. Uh, there's also the options to make a public comment online. Uh, they have a process where you can like register online, sign up, and, um, you're able to, uh, pick like a specific, um, uh, item that you wanna comment on, and you're able to sign up, receive support, or go behind and leave a comment. Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Was that cost for, for fire engine?
Yeah, so, the fire engine cost, uh, from what, uh, the, uh, information state is saying, uh, going up from six hundred and fifty thousand to one point three million. And then the fire trucks themselves, from one point three to two point three.
Oh, you're saying the firewall was changed a lot, and they didn't, they didn't balance things? Thank you. And next, we have State Senator Brian Jones.
Oh, yeah, my, my goodness. Okay, let's update, um. First we have regarding elderly parole at fifty years old to be elderly. Uh, Mary Belloslaw, that is, uh, passed, or that's, we have, that is the Senators' bill, SB two eight six, which basically says that the elderly, you have to change regarding the first release for elderly parole, um, for violent crimes and other violent crimes. Um, basically, because at fifty years old, that still is a risk for our community. Uh, that will be heard tomorrow in public safety. Uh, three eighty and three seventy-nine regarding sexually violent predators, both of those bills, one is making state hospitals responsible for placement, the other is, uh, three eighty is state-run transitional facilities for placement of sexually violent predators. Both of those pass through public safety. Um, so waiting on SB, uh, one, which is veteran retirement, which basically will exempt, um, veteran retirement, that's what's going to be in tax, which California, unlike other states, taxes, uh, that income. Um, also bad news, uh, Senators SB two failed, and that was going to repeal the, uh, carbon fuel standards connected by the, our, the California Air Resources Board. Um, would, would have stayed, probably about sixty-five, oh, I'd say sixty to ninety cents a gallon on gas. Um, that increase will come around in July. There's a hold on it, they have to appeal the decision on it, but we're likely to see that there's sixteen to ninety percent increase on their gasoline, uh, per gallon. Um, budget, that's right, so it's not breaking news. Uh, the governor originally released a number this year, three hundred sixty-three. The number is probably closer to three hundred sixty-three surplus. It's more likely we've got a two billion dollar deficit, and that's including taking seven, over seven billion from our state reserves. Uh, may we get a revise and find out what the details are on that. So, there's a legend update. Who's this up, right there, April twenty-third, five thirty, senior senator. A twelve driver smart. Uh, this is the class that, uh, Senator hosts throughout the district. Um, we have a, uh, officer, Kimberly, I think, I must name. She is a CHB officer, and will do a one-hour class based on driver safety, when to drive, when we should hang up, keys to not drive anymore. Uh, one of the comments, uh, talking about seniors earlier, is, uh, one of the interesting things with California, with legalization of marijuana, is some seniors are wanting to go back to their college days. And this is one of the points of the class, that the officers will always say, it's not the same stuff you smoke during your college. And you're more powerful and can barrier driving ability immensely, more so than you're back in the, those wild days when you're youth. So, those are the kind of stuff that matters, so we're just, you know, different, different kind of situations, and how you can be a better driver. Some insurance companies, such as USAA and, I think, AAA, do offer a minimal discount, but a discount nonetheless, since we've all seen our current insurance rate skyrocket. Uh, we'll offer them, not all insurance companies do, but some do. Uh, but it's good that it's gonna be in the senior center, uh, for, and with the town council, the senior center gave coverage for people to participate. Um, so that's kind of cool thing there. Then we have our nonprofit of the year submissions opened up for, for, for the senator. Every year, we select a nonprofit, and a group of nonprofits, uh, that do extraordinary work in the community. With a million constituents, limited to just one, Connor, it's a little rough. The senator represents from Alton, Gona, Albrook, UTC. Million people, there's a lot of good work to be done, so one of the things is recognizing them. Uh, we'll also be giving a reception later on this month for Woman of the Year, which was Maggie Wighton's from Dehisa. Your own Mary Los was a previous awardee, honorary from the senator. And we'll also be recognizing a number of other women who do extraordinary work in the district. And we'll be also announcing our Small Business of the Year for Small Business with the May. And I think that's it for now. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Did you mention the guest fellow of sixty cents?
Potentially, yes, so the California Air, Air Resource Board.
The guest for the California.
He comes from, just in California, you have a whole different standard than we mentioned.
Right, right.
Because, because that's what, that is what our, uh, California Air Resource Board has the prerogative to do, and we, the senator introduced legislation to reverse that power.
The senator?
Introduced, our, Brian Jones, introduced legislation to, to rescind that power for the California, California Air Resource Board, and the majority party decided, no, they, they should keep that authority raised.
So, we should buy, right?
California Air Resource Board, so you can, to, to, right?
That's all the money, it's, 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 it's.
It's every year, year, year increases on that, every year, we have, we serve you. Yes.
Why, why, why do you?
Because there's such a big deficit coming this year. We are requesting that the politicians put us in this position, taking ten percent pay cut until the deficit is gone. Please forward that to them.
Yes.
We need leadership by example.
Okay, um, State Senator number Chris Moore, Michael Rondo, Mike O'Neal. How about Congress Southern Facility, yes, I will say.
Yes.
Hi, everyone, uh, here, I'm Congressman, I'm Kate, I'm a congressman for the District of California. Uh, my opponents play our short, it's, um, so, under the following, yeah. Um, over DC, the Congresswoman, uh, did just, maybe, this is a piece of legislation, uh, called the Delete Don't Act, uh, to talk state efforts of, uh, Elon Musk, uh, and his, uh, country is trying to do a little bit of this over the government. Uh, over here in the District, we have two big things going on with our office. Uh, the first is the convention of art competition, um, which you guys may have heard me talk about, uh, competition at these meetings before, uh, we are offering second applications. Uh, if you know a artistically, commentary, or high school student, uh, that resides in Nermeisa, please do encourage them to apply. Uh, it's a brilliant new opportunity, uh, the winning student gets their artwork displayed in the tunnels of the Capitol over in DC, um, which is really, really cool. Uh, the Congresswoman actually did just a little trip over to Nermeisa High School, where she, uh, her first year supply, taught us in classroom practice. Um, so, we are currently submitting applications, uh, in order, uh, about that, on our website. Uh, and my last update is that the Congresswoman is actually hosting her first in-person town hall of this year, um, and that is going to be on April, so it's second, uh, April and the same time. Uh, I wait until Tuesday, uh, and more information about that, uh, will follow in the next, uh, district, or the Red School, um, plenty of awesome details to have. We will be requiring RCPs, because the capacity will be limited. But if you have any questions, you can reach me. Unfortunately, it's been a very busy day, so I'm all out of my business cards, uh, but my email is on the Nermis Council website. Try to follow me.
Okay, three sets to our open forum, and I recognize the name of, uh, the one person who signed up for open forum. We have, uh, Brandon Schroeder of County Parks Recreation, come on up.
Up front. Uh, good evening, uh, my name is Brandon Schroeder, I work for the city of County Parks and Recreation Department. Um, I, I stopped by just to give a quick update, we're working on the, uh, center project across the parking lot right here. Uh, we broke in ground, we had a ground wrecking event about a month, two, couple months ago now. So, we're in construction, we'll be in construction for the next year, approximately, maybe a little over a year. Um, so, I'm, I'm a recent manager in County Parks. Um, so I'm, I'm a recent manager in the County Parks Department, and the epicenter will be part of my region, so I have to pursue the ongoing operations once that's complete. Um, just to, to clarify, there's a big project going on in the Narayasa Community Park that the city of San Diego is running. Can't give you any information about that, um, other than hearsay. But the epicenter will be, it's a city-owned building, the county is leasing it from the city, we signed a forty-five year lease agreement, so I will, uh, so, you know, for the foreseeable future, we'll be operating that. So the things that we're in now, another way of construction, and I'm on the operations side trying to, you know, having more meetings with potential program leaders, instructors, partners, um, folks who are just interested in general, what, what's gonna happen here, kind of a steering committee, advisory committee. I don't, I don't have a committee form or anything like that yet, but it's, it's all kind of coming together now, so, so that's what we're working on, is, is putting together the program plan, the operational plan, um, and anticipating that we'll, we'll be up and running in about a year. And in about a year, you know, shortly before we get to the opening of it, we'll have new staff, we'll be able to hire new staff to run the place. Um, so we're trying to get things in place now, and it's, it's a quick update, and, you know, throughout, the other day, getting together the program plan never really stops, just to be clear. That's a continuous, we're always taking input from day to day, both kind of, uh, formal and informal, but it, it'll be a youth-focused community center. Um, I mean, right across from the high school, it's a great public square, place to socialize. Uh, we think it would be great. With all the community park projects going on at the same time, and those two projects finishing around the same time, I think it's a really exciting time in Narayasa, and we're happy to be a part of it. And, uh, you know, if anyone's interested or wants to talk more, has ideas for the place, let me know. I, uh, I wouldn't have been this far too, but luckily I grabbed some from the offices today, so I, I can, uh, share some, some with you, so I'm gonna find you after the meeting, if you'd like, yeah, question.
Well, what is the, a general role in mine? I mean, is it gonna be a social place, or is medical, uh, medical stuff gonna be provided, or is it gonna be focused on the teenage, right?
Primarily, yeah. It's, uh, it's about a eighty thousand foot recreation center. The main priority of it is, yeah, teens, youth. So there will be a time, you know, every day after school hours will be open door, um, drop in and drop out. There'll be game rooms, music rooms, kind of in general, you know, space to, to, to gather. Uh, we'll have kind of formal and informal programs. Um, that could be a place to do homework, tutoring, um, what was the one, the way one guy put it, was it, it was, you know, all the special interest clubs, there could be, there's a lot of people, groups of people with different interests or hobbies. You need a place to meet, a place to gather, come over there and do it.
Then chess?
Yeah, chess club.
There's not going to be players on the wall?
Yeah, we'll have staff on site all the time when it's open. So, and it'll be, you know, drop in and drop out facility after school hours primarily for the youth, but then also opportunities to reserve it for a private event. If you want to, maybe a birthday party on Sunday afternoon or something, um, it'd be kind of available for that too. Uh, bring it up for meetings, you know, if there's a, if there's a room where you have anything to sort of, um, these days. Um, but yeah, primarily you're a recreation center.
Wasn't it that before, ever?
It was, yeah, it was originally open as a library in nineteen seventy-seven. Converted over to a teen center in the nineties, and kind of morphed into a concert venue before it shut down. So it's, it's been closed and vacant now for, you know, ten years. Yeah, there's, they've been doing a lot of demo work, especially inside the building, it's, everything's getting torn up now, so it's, yeah, yeah, it's exciting now. Things are really-
Oh, more, yeah, a question. Those tubes that are out there in the corner, are you planning on using those with the skateboard, with the, with the skateboard, so I can surf for school when I go through the tubes and wave?
Good idea. But, but I got, well, that's part of the scene, about just anyway, so I can, uh, believe this for sure, especially warm weather, yeah. Sounds like fun.
That does raise a question in terms of timing, epicenter completion, uh, community park completion, which will be first, or do we, or are they opposite, neck and neck, or what?
Uh, well-
Or is epicenter first?
Edit aside, I mean, we'd love to finish first. But, you know, a little project takes five times a day, you're building a whole pool, and, you know, so, no, it's, I don't know, I, I think you're both scheduled to finish relatively close to each other.
Well, I heard it's, it's very similar, right. Well, thank you so much for that. Well, we're winding down, we're getting close to our, the time that the almos turn our meetings to a later than that, and like, before almos fail, because, um, Jonathan, our Fisher, like our president, also does taxes for a living, so he will be back in May, we'll have Fisher to report again in May. Better district, uh, Jennifer, yes? Jennifer, I'll have to leave already, okay. Uh, then we have membership, Jacob.
Um, yeah, questions about membership, please see me. And also for the first time since, I think January or February, we're starting to, uh, record and videotape the meetings again. So if you have a family at home who wasn't able to go, you can show them this recording and tell them, um, what she learned at the town council.
Thank you so much, Jacob. That will be a good addition to our meetings. And then, um, at the end here, I know Eric's not here, so I'll just briefly mention the scholarship deadline to apply for the Narayasa Town Council, Port Goodwin Scholarship, uh, for graduating high school seniors who have been involved in volunteering, community volunteering, is April thirtieth, and we look forward, every year we get an amazing group of students applying for that, and every day after the presentation we heard by the Aspen Challenge students, that will have some pretty amazing applicants this year. So, Auntie Bunny has a family member, um, knows someone on high school, telling about the requirements that you have to live within Narayasa, the graduating senior going on, is some sort of, uh, higher education, and they've been involved with volunteering. Joe?
Yeah, I did want to make sure that people that use the school district property for dog parks, they're not cleaning up after their dogs anymore, and the schools are gonna ban people from living near animals, dog parks anymore. So if you see somebody not cleaning up after their dog, they'll excuse them after they can do it, I guess. It's good, a few people are ruining the burial. The big thing that nobody's mentioned today wasn't in the ABC News, today is National Beer Day.
Okay, well, I have just a few other announcements before we adjourn. Joe, the champagne seeds can't be in that one more time. That's, uh, uh, hold, hold on, it's getting in that. And the, there'll be a special event in April, on Saturday, April nineteenth, from six PM to ten PM, near the Greenwich House, and kind of skills scanning, there's an article on the town council website and in the newsletter about it, a celebration of the night sky and nocturnal animals. And there will be some evening hikes and talks, and San Diego Stormy Association volunteers are bringing telescopes out for stargazing from sunset on until ten PM on the field behind the ranch house. So that should be a, uh, great event. The night before that, on Friday, April eighteenth, Challenger Middle School is doing Challenger Unplugged, not your usual school talent show, open to watch to the community, there'll be a food festival there, and I believe that's just five PM to seven PM on that day. It sounds like a lot of fun. And, yeah. Well, there's so much on the town council website, I guess that's about, and done. If there's anything else that you want to find out what's going on, Jacob, I'm excited, and look forward to seeing you in May, and just maybe it's a trip.